Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, June 24, 2025. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those that are A will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is mine, one nation, one home, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our motion, agenda is amended. Next order of business is proclamations. And I believe we have one by Councilperson Strasburger. It will be presented.
Yes, thank you.
It's not great.
If everyone here for aphasia awareness can come up, and as you're making your way up right here to my left over here, I'll say just a few words. I'm really pleased to be joined today by a number of people who are facing aphasia in one way or another, they themselves or loved ones. And I'm really glad that we're doing this because every single person that I've spoken to about this proclamation, when I mention it, inevitably they say, what's aphasia? Or they maybe they've heard of it, but they're not quite sure exactly what it is. So I'm really glad that there's some advocacy happening to start to spread awareness and understanding. And with that, I'll jump in with the proclamation. So whereas, over 2 million people in the United States live with aphasia, a language disorder often caused by stroke or brain injury that affects speaking, reading, writing, comprehension and memory, but not intelligence. And whereas, aphasia can profoundly impact daily life, impacting relationships, work, independence, and mental health with many individuals facing social isolation and depression due to communication challenges and a shortage of mental health providers. And whereas, Aphasia Awareness Day seeks to increase understanding and reduce stereotypes and negative assumptions about people living with aphasia. And whereas, the Pittsburgh Aphasia Community Group provides vital support and community to those affected by aphasia, promoting engagement in meaningful activities, fostering relationships, and advocating for inclusive care and communication practices. And whereas, people with aphasia can continue to learn, grow, and achieve great things when provided appropriate support, including speech-language therapy and participation in community-based groups. And whereas, it is essential that we all practice patience and kindness when communicating with individuals with aphasia, speaking at a natural pace, listening actively, and giving them the time they need to respond. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend the Pittsburgh Aphasia Community Group for its outstanding efforts in raising awareness and supporting individuals with aphasia, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare June 24, 2025 to be Aphasia Awareness Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
She'll move.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Is there someone who'd like to come up and say a few words, or we can pass the microphone around? Get this ready to go, just in case. Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to say what aphasia is a little bit more in detail and give this group a lot of accolade for the courage they have to be here with you all today. So aphasia is a language disorder that affects someone's ability to read, write, speak, and understand. It does not impact intelligence, and it's access to that information that's limited. So like we mentioned in the proclamation, having patience, a slow but natural pace, simple sentences, and kind of working with the person to understand what they're trying to say and support them in any way you can is really, really helpful. The prevalence is 2.5 to 4 million people in the United States. So that's one in every 272 Americans is living with aphasia. And like Senator said, not many people know about it. So our aim as a group is to not only help these individuals who live with chronic aphasia to reconnect to family, friends, meaningful activities of daily living, potentially returning to work and volunteer opportunities, but also to kind of spread the word so that other people who may be living with it and living in isolation can find groups like ours to continue to live a purposeful life despite having aphasia. So I would like to introduce you to all of our wonderful members and supports here, and thank you for having us today.
Thank you. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Krista Kravitz. I'm sorry. I'm the clinical director of the Pittsburgh Community Aphasia Center and a speech pathologist.
Hi, my name is Norma Ortega, and I had a stroke four years ago. And I used to be a vice president of Mortgage Connect. I graduated from New Kane University, but I'm here and I'm here.
My, my name is Bridgette Calmeyer.
Hi, my name is Tina Harris. I had a stroke 11 years ago, and thanks to people in groups like Pitt and Krista and Weill, I'm doing a lot better. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. My name's Gary Calmeyer. I'm Bridgette's husband, caretaker, and companion. We've been married 53 years. Like I always say, 53 long years. But they've been great. And we both are attorneys and have been in practice together at the Little Neighborhood Office in Penn Hills for 40 years. Thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you for having the speakers here. That's one of the things that we often do is tase the word that we are saying to something simpler. My name is Kathleen, and I had my stroke, strict, no.
Stroke.
Yes. Okay. Anyway, it was about 10 years ago, 10 months ago when I had my stroke. And I'm working well. Thank you.
My name is Jim Warda, Kathleen's husband and caretaker. We work hard together, doing many things every night, and especially with the aphasia group, which we joined around December of this past year.
Hi, I'm Melissa Rahm. I'm a speech-language pathologist, a clinical researcher. Today's my first day, so it's an exciting first day.
My name is Roger Robinson. I was an aircraft mechanic for 30 years. I'm glad confirmation is ended. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wallace. I'm a speech-language pathologist and a professor at the University of Pittsburgh. And I want to publicly thank all the folks here for letting me learn from them, which I really appreciate.
I am Will Evans. I'm an associate professor at the University of Pittsburgh and a speech pathologist. And I'm just so proud of this group, and we really, really appreciate your support. This is just one place in life where we can learn what kindness means, because there's a million things like this. This is one of them, and it really matters. And so just a space to slow down and listen to somebody, see how they're communicating, seeing what they need. Aphasia is one of these places where we can figure out what that is and offer it, and then keep our eyes peeled and your ears open for the million other ways where we can understand and help. Thank you.
Can we get all members for a photo? Thank you. I don't know if I can turn it off or not.
You want to? 1973? 1973, yeah. Okay, Councilperson Warwick, you have proclamation to present?
Thank you. Could we have everyone come up for the Squirrel Hill Night Markets? Righty. So, by the way, the night markets are my favorite summer event. Between that and Open Streets, but both my, both closing the streets down for walking and enjoying Pittsburgh, so.
What's your favorite in Squirrel Hill?
Yeah. Whereas, the first Squirrel Hill Night Market took place in 2015 and was co-hosted by Uncover Squirrel Hill and the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition. And whereas, since 2018, since the 2018 season, the Squirrel Hill Night Markets consistently draw over 10,000 visitors per night, creating significant economic activity and increased visibility within the Squirrel Hill Business District by complementing not competing with local merchants. And whereas, in 2025, the Squirrel Hill Night Markets, celebrating their 10th anniversary season, are hosted exclusively by Uncover Squirrel Hill and I Made It Market, featuring food trucks, favorite Squirrel Hill restaurants, neighborhood merchants, and over 120 I Made It Market artists and crafters, plus entertainment all evening long, hosted by Sunburst School of Music. And whereas, the Squirrel Hill Night Markets are the largest events in Squirrel Hill, driving foot traffic, stimulating local sales, and supporting micro-business growth. And whereas, the markets are modeled after vibrant, open-air nighttime bazaars in Asia and Europe, and attract visitors from the neighborhood and region showcasing the diverse spirit of Squirrel Hill through art, food, and entertainment. And whereas, the Squirrel Hill Night Markets have seen over 200% growth in vendor participation since launching, with over 120 artisans featured in each market. And whereas, 30% of artisans are debuting newcomers each season, proving that the markets have helped incubate new local businesses by offering a low-risk, inclusive retail launchpad that features LGBTQIA+ Black, women-owned, and minority businesses. And whereas, for nearly a decade, Carrie Nardini of I Made It Market and Jamison Judah Combs of Uncover Squirrel Hill have worked to plan and produce the Squirrel Hill Night Markets, and their dedication has been instrumental to the event's continued success. And whereas, the board members, volunteers, community supporters, merchants, and their families have contributed thousands of hours over the past decade to make the Squirrel Hill Night Markets a continued success, with special thanks to Heather Graham, Robin Crawley, John Katz, Marty Eisler, Lynette Lederman, Justin Siegel, and the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, whose litter patrol volunteers contribute to ensuring litter collection before, during, and after the event, so the night market is clean and welcoming to all. And whereas, the Squirrel Hill Night Markets stimulate social interaction, neighborhood bonding, and reflect Squirrel Hill's diversity celebrated by attendees and vendors alike, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 28, 2025, which is the first one this season, to be Squirrel Hill Night Market Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. Motion passes. Proclamation approved.
I really don't have much to say. I think that we got a lot of our thank yous. Obviously, the volunteers and the people that work behind the scenes that make this happen. But I think Carrie and I also, we have to thank our husbands, who tolerate us during every night market season. So without them, the night markets would not happen. So thank you to them. Thank you to Public Works, to our public safety folks who also support us, and then also our council members. You guys have been amazing. And then also the Parking Authority for helping us out this year as well. We want to recognize them too. So hopefully we see you guys this Saturday. We're looking forward to it.
I'm Carrie Nardini. I run the I Made It Markets and Neighborhood Flee, which are both pop-up events that happen all over Pittsburgh all year long. The I Made It Market started in 2007, and the Squirrel Hill Night Market has been one of the best experiences for us. We've been involved from the get-go, and it's really amazing to see how some of our artists will go from popping up at our events, getting their sea legs, learning how to run a business, and we work with them on that. And then some of them have gone to wholesale and even retail within the city of Pittsburgh. And that's really the success that we're looking for, regardless of where small businesses are in their journey, if they are super happy with popping up, if their goal is retail. It's just amazing how much the city of Pittsburgh just comes out to shop and enjoy and support all of these small local businesses. So thank you very much.
Well, thanks to Councilperson Warwick for bringing me up with her for this event. We do share Squirrel Hill, but the event is technically in the Councilperson's district. But I, before I was on council, I was on the board of the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, and I was the chair of the very new Events Committee. And we said, we wanted to do more events in Squirrel Hill. Squirrel Hill needs more events. And so to see 10 years later, there are, you know, there's not just this event, there's the Lunar New Year Parade, and there's all sorts of other events. There's even been like a petting zoo on Forbes Avenue at one point. To see that happen and to see, you know, the very, very, very small role that I played, mostly other people doing the work, but you know, from a volunteer perspective to a, you know, vendor perspective, to seeing, you know, especially in the later part of the year in the fall, students, college students, grad students, people who are new to Pittsburgh, being able to feel a little bit at home by coming to the night market. It's just such a wonderful event, and I'm grateful to these two and everyone who's made it possible over the years. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I believe we have two proclamations to be read into the record.
Councilmember Bobby Wilson presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby declares June 20, 2025, as YMR Club Day in honor of this historic milestone and the club's enduring contributions to civic life, social connection, and cultural enrichment in the North Side. And Councilmember Teresa Kail Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 28, 2025, as a day we honor the 250th birthdays of the Army, Navy, and Marine Corps in their service to our country.
Is there a motion for both proclamations?
She'll move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any no's, abstentions? All right, proclamations are approved. Thank you. That moves us on to a will of council that we have. Councilperson, would you like that read in its entirety or?
I'm happy to read it in its entirety if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll mention that this is a will of council, but it's very much complimentary to a set of, package of legislation that Councilmember Warwick is introducing today as well. And there was, I think, a really well-attended press conference just before council today that the councilwoman pulled together. So really grateful to that. But this is, this is meant to be complimentary. Whereas, access to quality, evidence-based health care is a fundamental issue of bodily autonomy that affects all Pennsylvanians, regardless of gender identity or sexual orientation. And whereas, LGBTQ+ affirming health care, including gender-affirming care for youths, youth and adults, is well-established medically necessary care endorsed by every major medical association in the United States. And whereas, decisions about medical care, including gender-affirming treatment, belong to patients, families, and their health care providers. And whereas, attacks on LGBTQ+ affirming care threaten not only the rights of transgender and non-binary individuals, but also set a dangerous precedent for restricting health care access for everyone, including the overwhelming number of cisgender individuals who safely use hormone-based care for a range of medical conditions. And whereas, Pennsylvania must take action to protect both the health care workforce and the rights of patients to receive appropriate care without fear, stigma, or political interference. And whereas, Governor Josh Shapiro has the opportunity to publicly affirm, reaffirm the Commonwealth's commitment to health care access, bodily autonomy, and the protection of providers and patients alike in the face of growing national threats to basic medical rights. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls on Governor Josh Shapiro to publicly affirm that gender-affirming care is essential, evidence-based health care that remains fully protected under Pennsylvania law, and be it further resolved that the Council calls on the governor to issue LGBTQ+ affirming health care is affordable and accessible to all through Medicaid, medical assistance, and CHIP. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges Governor Shapiro to take steps to protect Pennsylvania health care providers and health networks from federal persecution or intimidation, making clear that Pennsylvania remains a safe haven for providers committed to delivering quality care to all patients.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed vote no. Aye. Motion, sorry, will of council was approved, and that moves us, I'm sorry, any further comment on will of council? If not, moving on to next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, and deliberation which may be before council. Profanity will be not permitted. Our first registered speaker is, and I want to also remind you that when you're called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You all have three minutes to speak. First registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bloomfield and Valletta, Malta. My PC today is not the stuff that dreams are made of. I think that Valletta should be an ally of the city of Pittsburgh. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2028, globalinformationintelligencenetwork.net. Concerns of this council include the child, the vote, and neighborhoods. This is consistent with my initiatives for child-first laws. Number one, vote-by-voter verification for whom to the Supreme Court, and five elected neighborhood councils. Initiative four is to get local councils, including this one, to enact child-first legislation, which would be consistent with this will of council today, countrywide, and again, in the city of Pittsburgh. And this means, one, local full medical coverage for Yaro-Yorinja African Hauser child. Valletta provides this. Two, local full pre-university tutor service for Kodomo Asian Nihongo child. Valletta does this as well. Local, three, local full university tuition for Niño and Niña, South American Espanol. And Valletta does this as well. Four, local security efforts to, for Das Quint, that's European Deutsch, for the child's safety in his or her neighborhood. And five, local securement of the vote for future free speech exercised by the child when the child becomes able to do so. Initiative one is to do a case in the US Supreme Court to get the USFC to require vote-by-voter verification for whom. Guaranteeing for the child the freedom of speech in a democratic republic requires, in my view, gaining citizen control of our vote via vote-by-voter verification for whom, VVVFW. Currently, 3,144 US counties, all of them, including the Allegheny County Election Division, forbid a citizen from checking his or her or their vote for misplacement, which means loss or misapplication, listing it for another that you didn't vote for. His or her or their vote for misplacement and misapplication is a fundamental problem. Mr. Ganey cannot prove that he did not vote for Mr. O'Connor under the present circumstances. Question one to 1,000 here and 10,000 across the United States, that we ask, can you check your vote for misapplication or misplacement? And zero say yes. Question number two is, do you care? And they all say yes. We have a big problem.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Suda Jagannathan.
Good morning. My name is Suda Jagannathan, and I'm a community leader and a board member of the Coalition of Hindus of North America. I'm here today as a member of the Hindu community in the city of Pittsburgh, deeply disturbed by the horrific events that unfolded on April 22 in Kashmir, India, a massacre that shook the conscience of all who value human dignity and peace. Violence such as this crosses borders and affects all of us. On April 22, 2025, four terrorists affiliated with Pakistan-based the Resistance Front, a spinoff of Lakshar I Taiba, targeted civilians based on their religious identity. The terror group has been banned by the United States and the United Nations since 2001. According to eyewitness accounts, male victims were forced to unzip their pants to allow assailants to ascertain whether they were circumcised, a crude and barbaric method of verifying religious affiliation. Victims were directly questioned about their faith. Those who identified particularly as Hindus were summarily executed in front of their families. The death toll is 26 with mostly Hindu victims. Two months later, the community here, we are still reeling in shock and horror at the brutal and senseless killing of ordinary tourists. This unprovoked act of violence in Kashmir has made orphans of children as young as three, many widows and newlyweds and honeymooners. Some of the victims are personally known to us, making this hit much closer to home. Today, I ask this council to not only condemn the April 22 massacre, but to stand firmly in solidarity with the victims and with our community. In Pittsburgh, we are just 15,000 strong in a city of 270,000. And we also ask that we stand with our nation and the people around the world. The city of Pittsburgh, and in fact, the state of Pennsylvania, are familiar The City of Pittsburgh, and in fact, the State of Pennsylvania, are familiar with religiously motivated violence. Whether this happens in our neighborhoods or thousands of miles away, religious violence and terrorism must be condemned. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Kaviri Patel.
My name is Kaviri Patel. I'm from Upper St. Clair. Namaste and good morning, Honorable Mayor Gani and City Council members. My name is Kaviri Patel, and I'm a proud Hindu teenager and a rising high school student from Upper St. Clair. I'm standing here before you today to bring to light the atrocious acts committed by the terrorist group known as the Resistance Front, a spinoff for Lakshar e Taiba, so banned since 2001 by the United States as well as the United Nations. On April 22nd, 26 innocent lives were brutally taken. The fact that these terrorists went from family to family asking if they were Hindu and then ruthlessly killing the male members of these families speaks numbers to the brutality. Why did they spare the accompanying mothers and children? So they could speak of the terror and relive it, and so that this act could strike fear in the heart of the Hindu community, my community. This attack shook me to my core. When an attack of such great magnitude occurs, outrage usually follows soon after, but I was shocked to be met with silence from the rest of the world, as if it was just another headline. But to me and the rest of the Hindu community, it wasn't just a headline. It was personal, and it cut deep. It reminded me that hate for our community was real, and that one can become a target simply by being a Hindu, and that's terrifying. I kept asking myself, why was it that such dastardly acts were being committed against my community, and the world simply kept watching? So I took it upon myself that when the world takes no notice and stands beside, I simply must double my own effort. That's why I stand before you today. I ask you to stand with us. I ask you to stand up for those 26 innocent people who lost their lives simply for being Hindu. I ask you to stand up for the over 15,000 members of the Hindu community in Pittsburgh, and I ask you to stand up for the over 1.2 billion Hindus in the world. You don't have to march in groups waving flags, but we ask the honorable City Council members to remember the departed 26 souls and the Hindu community left hurting deeply. For if we do not speak up for the dead, we abandon the living. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Krishna Satya Vagishwar.
Namaste and good morning, Honorable Mayor Gani and City Council members. My name is Krishna Satya Vagishwar, and I'm a proud Hindu teenager who just graduated from Upper St. Clair High School. I'm here today because something terrible happened that hurt me deeply, and not just me, but Hindus all around the world. On April 22nd, in Pahalgam, Kashmir, 26 Hindu men were brutally murdered by terrorists simply because of their religion. These were innocent people, tourists, fathers, newlyweds, just enjoying a peaceful day in nature. These terrorists stopped them, asked their religion, and when they said they were Hindu, they were executed in front of their families. One Christian man was also killed. This wasn't just violence, it was targeted hate. And yet, most of the world stayed silent. As a young Hindu growing up in America, I've always been proud of who I am. My faith teaches me ahimsa, nonviolence, seva, selfless service, and vasudevakutumbhakam, the belief that the whole world is one family, and we don't just say these values, we live them. During Guru Vandana, we honor our teachers because we seek knowledge and see them as sacred. On Raksha Bandhan, we tie rakis, sacred threads on the wrists of first responders and police officers, to thank them for protecting us. And during Diwali, the Festival of Lights, we collect food and essentials so we can share joy with the homeless and those in need through the Seva Diwali program. That's what being Hindu looks like, looks like for us here, respect, gratitude, and giving back. So when we hear of people being murdered simply for being Hindu, it hurts in a way that's hard to put into words. It makes us feel invisible and forgotten. But I'm here to say that I am Hindu and I am not invisible. I want this council to know what happened in Kashmir that day. I want you to remember those 26 lives, and I want you to stand with us, just like you would for any other community hurt by hate. Because terror against any group is terror against all of us. Please don't let silence be the response to our pain. Let your voices show that we matter too. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Shredvi Lakshmi Menary Anan.
Namaste, Honorable Mayor Gani and members of the City Council. My name is Shredvi Lakshmi Narayanen, and I'm a resident of Upper St. Clair. Our community has tried to come together since the April 22nd massacre in a great show of resilience and solidarity. Even in adversity, we seek ways to draw strength from our culture, values, and faith, and engage positively with the society. Last month, over 100 teachers across the North and South Hills of Pittsburgh were felicitated in the Hindu way, in a demonstration of our respect for the teaching community. We thank the City Council for issuing the nation's first proclamation in support of Guru Vandana in 2025, the 10th anniversary of this event in Pittsburgh. We fondly recall the support we received from the City Council in 2024 in response to the baseless slander of the Hindu community. Each year, the City Council has generously issued the proclamation for Health for Humanity Yogatan, an event that is held in January of every year and recognizes the importance of good health for vibrant communities. Let me now highlight the generosity of the Hindu community through Seva Diwali, our annual food drive. Last year, PA residents donated 21,000 pounds of food, and nationally, we collected about 723,000 pounds of food. Last year, and since 2018, Seva Diwali has donated over 2.8 million thousand pounds of food, sorry, 2.8 million pounds of food benefiting about 650 organizations nationally. The Hindu community is a peace-loving community, working hard to respect and contribute to the local communities. We believe that the whole world is one family, vasudevakutumbhakam. We are equally hurt when anyone is harmed, which is why we stood hand in hand with the Jewish community in the aftermath of the Tree of Life massacre in 2018. This is remembered and recognized by Rabbi Hazan Jeffrey Myers even last week. We also engaged in making masks and food delivery for our first responders during the COVID pandemic. In partnership with Seva International, we continue to support the local communities in various forms. Today, I ask you to unanimously condemn the heinous acts of violence at Pahalgam. I also ask for your unequivocal endorsement of the contribution of the Hindu community for the benefit of Pittsburgh, the citizens, and local communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is John Legu.
Hello, thank you, Council. I am John Legu of Highland Park, and I'd like to ask the Council, when was the last time you drove on Lake Drive in Highland Park? One of our most beautiful city parks has an incredibly bumpy and dangerous road. I'm a Pittsburgh business owner, employing over 83 individuals, and more importantly, I am a homeowner, homeowner on Stan Ave in Highland Park. Our house is near the entrance to the park where Stan turns into Lake Drive, though for the past two years, I have watched the road that I use daily fall further and further into disrepair. The road doesn't just have one or two potholes that are so characteristic of our great city, where we are plagued with big swings in temperature. No, there are not just one or two potholes on the road. Lake Drive is totally and completely catered, cratered. I went out and counted this morning over 184 potholes on a .8 mile stretch of road. That's roughly a pothole every seven yards, and that's not even the worst section. The worst section is the most northern part of Lake Drive, where I found an 80, 68-foot stretch of continuous potholes, every inch covered. And in the same area, I measured one individual pothole that was three feet long and 2.8 feet wide and half a foot deep. Strokes of road are truly missing, and it is nearly impossible to navigate safely. I personally have had almost four head-on collisions with drivers who have driven in the opposite lane, going opposing traffic to avoid the potholes. And you know, we have over a million people who visit the Pittsburgh Zoo alone in Highland Park every year, just the zoo. Millions of families with small children driving over the horrendous roads, not to mention the visitors at the reservoir, the pool, the dog park, the courts, the open gardens, everything that makes the park great. We have millions of visitors driving on this road every year, and yet we present our absolute worst to them when they enter our city. It's somewhat embarrassing. But setting aside the fact that it's an eyesore, it truly is unsafe. There is a high probability of property damage to cars at every turn, and there is a real potential loss of human life. As I mentioned before, I have had almost four head-on collisions due to other drivers attempting to swerve to dodge potholes. Four. As a 29-year-old who is recently engaged, I would love to bring children into my home in Highland Park as well, but I believe if there is even the slightest chance that they could be injured on our very own street in an accident, then I will very easily move far outside the city limits in a heartbeat to protect them. So again, I ask you, councilors, when was the last time you drove on Lake Drive in Highland Park? It's a beautiful park with lots of fun activities.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Ralph Williams.
Hello, the acting Council President Bobby Wilson, and I want to thank you and the members of council for letting me speak. I want to apologize because last week I was signed up to speak and I couldn't be on the air here because my wife was sick. I had to take her to the hospital at the last minute. So I want to apologize for my being absent from speaking here, because most of the time I am here whenever I sign up. There are times that I'm not because of something that has gone on of importance. I'm currently down here in Ocean City, Maryland, spending the summer down here with some family. And the public safety stuff that has gone on over the weekend is a disgrace in Pittsburgh. Last weekend, it was Jack Stack Pool. This weekend, it was South Side. It was East Liberty. It was the St. Mary of the Mount Church. There was all kinds of big police incidents that required other municipalities to come in and help the City of Pittsburgh Police. This is a disgrace to public safety, and you know what? It's really awful. And I feel bad for the City of Pittsburgh residents because I'm going to say this, not to be ignorant, I love Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh is my, is my home and everything else. But if my relatives down here in Ocean City, Maryland ask me to stay, I'm not, we're not coming back, because you know why? The city is a lawless city right now. You have so much stuff going on and the police can't handle it. And the public safety is a disgrace. My question to this council is, do you care about public safety? Because if you did, you would have done something, and you've done nothing. Okay? Number two, I've been down here many times, or I've spoken many times at this council in regards to PCTV. All right? First of all, I got screwed by Deputy Mayor Jake Pollack. He laughed at my face and told me that the city was going to do something about it. Does this council, and those of you who are on your way out, Teresa Kelsmith and a few others that may be resigning or whatever, you might want to become a hero on your way out? You ever hear something like that? You want to be a hero? Does this council want to be heroes for the city? I got a, I got a method for you. And then take it and stick it to Ed Gani and put it right up his butt on his way out. Help PCTV. Get it back on air. Get the producers to put their shows back on. Get the youth back into, into PCTV. Get it going again. You've left it as an afterthought and a redheaded stepchild. And as a person who has media shows online, that's disgraceful. Okay? And the city residents have no way of putting TV shows on anymore.
Next registered speaker is Areo Cornelio Jr. There's Areo Cornelio Jr. here. All right, we'll move on to the next registered speaker. This is our last registered speaker, is Ikahana Hamakina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Chief Ikahana Hamakina. In the midst of it all, the chaos, war, and confusion, I found in Oasis a hidden gem, a place of healing, a place full of peace and spiritual growth and physical growth, a place of healing, a place to get away from it all. The only problem I found at this place was that it wasn't big enough for the whole city to enjoy. It needed urgent expansion, in my opinion. I'd also come to find out another problem with looming. This problem had nothing to do with the space. Instead, this problem was Council President Daniel Lavelle. To seek to close the space and make room for a developer, redlining, gentrification, urban renewal, as the 50s, 60s, and 70s, and now the URA, the Urban Redevelopment Authority. This is not okay, and my message to you, City Council President Daniel Lavelle, and those sitting idly by and not doing anything about it, this will not happen on my watch. This farm is essential and must remain in the community. The Freeman Family Farm located at 1426 Janita Street on the North Side in Manchester. This farm is essential and must remain in the community. Food being essential to life, this farm must stay. Daniel Lavelle, this is your opportunity to ensure that families have a chance to thrive and leave a legacy behind, revive our community standards of excellence. Our people deserve and demand a just and equitable share of land and opportunities to create generational wealth. City Council members need to band together to support this farm. With the rise of inflation, food, gas, clothing, furniture, utilities, tuition, you name it, too many, you may too find yourself in need of free food to supplement your own food supply one day. Pregnant women, single mothers, and families have access to locally grown fruits and vegetables. And programming, learning how to grow, learning how to manage a farm, learning how to navigate emotions for children. A space where learning how to build community happens, learning how to eat healthy without compromising taste. This initiative is sustainable, if less alone. I would like to personally thank my elder Lisa Freeman, who I am inspired. Thank you for her dedication, perseverance, compassion, commitment, intellect.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. We will now take comments from those in chamber. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak? If so, please come forward to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. You all have three minutes to speak.
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 1715 Mercer Street, up at the top of the hill. First, I want to say thank you for bringing up Lisa's name. We need to all fight to help her, to keep these farms, and they're for the community. They are helping the community. And also, Mr. Cartill, I believe this is, you're the one that I would talk to. I want you to look at all the work they're doing in these trucks that are carrying the dirt out. Well, I live up on the third floor, and I can see the dust, the dirt. I have asthma, so I know that that is contributing to pollution. But I saw one truck that has a, this looks like a screen on top of his truck, but then there's another truck that covers everything. None of that dirt can get out. I believe that those trucks are supposed to be like that, and you should see why they're not. I'm talking about so that dirt don't be coming out. Do you understand that I'm watching all this dirt flying out the trucks? But they have a top that they can put on there to keep it from flying out in our neighborhood. Won't you see about that? Now also, Bernadette is not here, the woman that always talks about you, Cartill, in your community. What I was saying about this- When I was saying about this woman, the bad actor up in our, up in our building that you saw running, chasing up on, chasing me. I came home from church Sunday. She's outside the door telling Mr. Bob, that's a white man, he can't hear real good, real nice fella, let me in, Mr. Bob. I said, no. And my daughter told me I shouldn't have said something, but she's not allowed in there. But Mr. Bob can't hear. Mr. Bob don't know. I said, Mr. Bob, she's not allowed. You'll get put out. Okay, so I go in and I said, I was mumbling, going in. She comes behind me and am I calling her a B? I said, call her the B word. I said, no, I'll call you naughty pie with that big knot on your head and leave me alone. My husband pushes for me to go in. She goes in first. Okay, I come in behind her and I'm saying, you're not allowed in here. She's like this, I got a gun, I'll shoot your ass. Twice she threatened me. So she has a gun. For the policeman, I know I come down and I fuss about you, but you are there when they call you to protect and to serve. And I'm telling you, she's armed and she's dangerous. She threatened me. She, like she has her gun, I'll shoot you. Do you understand? I live there. I've been living there 10 years. How is it that she don't live there and her mother's there? Her mother does. She says, as long as my mother live there, she's coming. I had said to the manager that she should put her out and I thought about it, no. I said, no, I would want my daughter to be able to come and see about me. So she should be up on the 11th floor, whatever floor her mother lived on, not on the third where I live where she said I better keep my mouth shut. Do you understand? I am being threatened by someone that's not allowed in the building.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Devon McLean Hill District, to follow up on the dude that was on here asking you guys if you care about public safety, that's highly questionable. For a lot of reasons that aren't even spoken about here today. Uh, the Pittsburgh police, it's in shambles, it's a cesspool, and I don't know why you people let it stay that way. Are you enjoying it? Maybe you ought to get sued a few more times for some of this misconduct that's going Deprioritization of enforcement of crimes based on identity rather than conduct. So that means when a person tells me they ain't going to believe you, I get to be the victim. I'm hearing less of that in the city of Pittsburgh, right? Coming from incompetent white guys who just happen to be the manager because they snort coke with the other manager, right? When I'm working with a white woman, they're not going to believe you. I feel threatened. I'm going to be able to call the police for harassment, racial vilification, right? Because it's based on behavior rather than identity, which we all know, the laws are already enforced much more by identity than by anything else. Civil fines for engaging in sex work in the city of Pittsburgh. Is prostitution ain't illegal already? So this means you're going to be arresting the men paying for the sex, right? Or does that mean that, that, you know, these women who commit crimes in the city of Pittsburgh are finally going to get a little bit of accountability handed to them? All the poverty and the crime coming from these, from, from the children, have you ever looked at their dope-shooting mother or their crack-shooting single mother? Like, do, do you understand some of these women enjoy being crack addicts and single mothers and collecting government checks for nothing? You don't understand. Like, oh, and gender-affirming care, not on my tax dollar, buddy. Y'all better put that somewhere else or even mental, you know, maybe your wires is crossed.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Cerise Taylor, the missing child, also known as Special Agent Sunshine. It's real hard to be a special agent for God, but you guys make it easy. I didn't even think I was going to say that, but on my way here, a driver passed me up, a bus driver passed me up. P R T C O, please. These drivers are being paid by the second I just found out to do what? Pick up passengers? Why are we getting passed up? That wasn't even what I came up here to talk about, Lord. Woo, thank you for using me as an instrument to do your will, not mine. I return a sender any voodoo hexes curses being sent towards me 100 million, billion, trillion googaflex and whoever's sending it, Lord, please throw them into a lake of fire. Joshua 1:8 says, keep this book of the law always on your lips. Meditate on it day and night so that you may be careful to do everything written in it. Then you will be prosperous and successful. My first Bible had the red letters in it. I got it from the Bookmobile. Y'all remember the Bookmobile? Used to come here to Pittsburgh? Y'all remember? Come on, y'all, I know y'all. Y'all remember the Bookmobile? That's where I got my first Bible. And it had the red letters in it in that age of eight, I'll say. I'm guessing eight. I wanted to know what God was saying. I read the scripture, man shall not live by bread and wine, but by every word that comes from God's mouth. And I went right to the red letter. Well, what'd he say about, you know, because I had issues at eight, like really, that I had to take straight to him. Because my parents didn't listen to me when I told them there was a pedophile in our family. They didn't listen. So to parents who have children that come to them and tell them they're being touched in the wrong places, please listen, because they're telling you the truth. Don't say, no, not Uncle Henry. He wouldn't do it. Yes, he would. Please protect these children. I'm not playing with y'all. I'm protecting the children for the next five generations from pedophile Uncle Henry right now. I'm not playing with y'all. Neither is God. I love the Lord. He heard my cry and pitied every groan. Long as I live and travel through the rives, I'll hasten to his throne. In Jesus's name, amen.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing that there's no further speakers, the next order of business will be presentation of papers. First, we have Chair of Human Resources, Councilman Charler.
No new papers, Mr. President Protam.
Thank you. Chair of Public Safety and Wellness, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number 1962, Resolution Amending Resolution 848 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and the director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an amended professional services agreement or agreements with End Time Solutions, Inc., for EMS and police scheduling and timekeeping services by increasing the approved amount by $434,140.30 at a total cost not to exceed $1,336,665.30 over 10 years.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 1963, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement, agreements, and/or a memorandum of understanding with the Logistics Management Institute, doing business as Noble Reach Foundation for the purpose of receiving grant funds in an amount not to exceed $78,000 to support one fellowship position in data science and one fellowship position in cybersecurity. A local match not to exceed $152,000 will bring the total project cost to an amount not to exceed $230,000.
Thank you. I have a note here that the waiver roll eight is requested on 1963.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Okay, that will appear on tomorrow's agenda. Next, we have Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill number 1964, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1228 Haron Avenue at no cost to the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cal Smith with the Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. Protam.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number 1965, Resolution Amending Resolution 932 of 2024, which authorized the fee schedule for 2025 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code by revising utility permit fees as recommended by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at no cost to the city.
Thank you. Next is Councilperson Warwick of Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number 1966, Resolution Authorizing the Taking, Appropriating, and Condemning by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Easements Necessary for the Completion of Temporary Construction Work for Sidewalk Construction and Associated Miscellaneous Work for Public Transportation Purposes Through Imminent Domain and Further Authorizing the Payment of Just Compensation and Necessary and Incidental Acquisition Costs Related thereto for the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project at a Cost Not to Exceed $50,000, reimbursable at 80%. Bill 1967, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Hennington, Durham, and Richardson of Pennsylvania Architects and Engineers, PC, for Costs Associated with the Master Plan of a Public Safety Training Campus and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thorough of Not to Exceed $1,800,000 over a period of two years. Bill 1974, Ordinance Amending Title VI, Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions by Adding a New Chapter 630 Providing for the Deprioritization of Enforcement of Crimes Based on Identity Rather Than Conduct. Bill 1975, Ordinance Amending Title VI, Conduct, Article V, Discrimination, Chapter 659, Unlawful Practices to Restrict Discrimination in Medical Care on the Basis of Gender Identity. And Bill Number 1976, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions by Adding a New Section 629 Providing for the Assessment of a Civil Fine for Engaging in Sex Work in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for myself, Land, Houston, and development committee, Councilperson, could you, I have one new paper.
Oh, sorry.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number 1968, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as the Anathan House located at 1620 Murray Avenue in the Squirrel Hill North Neighborhood in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city.
Thank you. And for our President Lavelle's committee, there are three. One is an appointment. If you, should you read the? Oh.
I'll do the appointment first.
Yeah, the appointment. Thank you.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill number 1969, Resolution Reappointing Kahari Mosley as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh Board of Directors with a Term to Expire April 30, 2029.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, please report what you're saying. Aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks for all your work and looking for your continued work on that authority. Next, we have a communication by Jake Pollak.
Bill number 1970, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended June 20, 2025.
This is just a motion received, read, received, and filed.
Second.
And next, we have 1971.
Bill 1971, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 173 of the Pittsburgh City Code, the Naming of Room 902 of the City-County Building to the John R. Sibitt Conference
Thank you. And we will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council?
Bill number 1754, Resolution Appointment of Audra Mitchell as a Member of the Gender Equity Commission with a Term to Expire April 1, 2028. Bill 1757, Resolution Appointment of Crystal Wamawa as a Member of the Gender Equity Commission with a Term to Expire April 1, 2028.
Is there a motion to approve?
Bill moved.
Did we interview?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, say no.
That's okay. I just want to ask one more question. Do we get financial statements from them beforehand, before the interviews, Madam Clerk? Do we get the financial statements of the people?
No, we did not.
So that's part of the code, so I don't know why we're not doing that. So I want to make sure that that happens next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're at, we have a motion.
And if it doesn't, I'm going to make sure we hold the.
I'm sorry?
And if it doesn't, I'm going to make sure we do everything we can to hold the appointments.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please report what you're saying. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion passes. 1974 passes. And next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilwoman, Councilperson Erica Strasburg presenting on Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. Protam.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number 1958, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for June 18, 2025 with an Affirmative Recommendation, Bill 1892, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property to Qualified City Residents Subject to Affordability Restrictions at No Cost to the City, Items A through E, 1310 Pritchard Street, 2921 Merwin Avenue, 3408 Clearfield Street, 195 Stevens Street, and 454 Norton Street. Bill 1915, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Attorney Registration for 2025 Pennsylvania Attorney Annual Registrations for an Amount Not to Exceed $5,225 over one year. Bill 1916, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Bernstein Berkeley, PC, for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $6,115.50 over one year. Bill 1917, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Professional Consultation Services Agreement, Agreements, or Amendments thereto with Exponent, Inc., in Connection with Claims and Litigation Involving the Fern Hollow Bridge at a Cost Not to Exceed $40,000 over one year. Bill 1920, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, Effective December 27, 2021, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capitol Budget. Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two through Two Thousand and Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program to Decrease Facility Improvements by Three Hundred Twenty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars and Increase Park Reconstruction by Three Hundred Twenty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard and heard the reading and title of all the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? If not, the bill is not read, read and ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, President Protem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill has been received, the legally required number of votes has finally passed. And that moves us on to... Councilperson Barbara Warwick presents Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Protem.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number nineteen fifty-nine, reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill nineteen twenty-one, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, right-of-way, and construction phases of the City Steps Project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed two million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, an increase of one million eight hundred thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at eighty percent, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars, an increase of sixteen thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? If not, the bill is ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the vote will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, President Protem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. It moves us on to the Councilperson Robert Sharland presenting the Committee on Human Resources.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number nineteen sixty, reported a committee on human resources for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill nineteen twelve, resolution amending Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-two, which amended Resolution three twenty-two of two thousand and eighteen, which authorized the mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Integrated Health Twenty-One, LLC, for services relating to the administration and management of a wellness portal by extending the term for six months, adding eighty thousand five hundred and forty dollars for a not-to-exceed amount of one million forty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Thank you. The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, President Protem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Kahari Mosley presenting on Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number nineteen sixty-one, reported a committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill nineteen thirteen, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for twenty-three oh five Bedford Avenue at no cost to the city. Bill nineteen fourteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to execute a declaration of restrictions and covenants and appropriate documents in cooperation with Pittsburgh Water over certain easements and right-of-way in the vicinity of Riverview Park within the City of Pittsburgh as a condition of an operations and maintenance and grant agreements Pittsburgh Water has with the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority in conjunction with stormwater improvements in the area at no cost to the city.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? If not, the bill is read, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, President Protem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. Brings us to motions and resolutions. We have one, nineteen twenty-three. That's up for a motion to reconsider. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Bill nineteen twenty-three.
Second.
There's a second?
Second. Thank you. And now I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill nineteen twenty-three with what's in front of you.
There's a second?
Second.
And now, all those in favor of the amendment, please...
Could you tell, explain a little bit what the differences are?
Yes, yes, certainly.
There is one small change changing. This was asked by our Council Budget Office from twenty-five to twenty-six. It's just a digit change.
Yeah, okay, I see it. Thank you.
A five to a six. Is this a voice vote or roll call for the amendment?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, President Protem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Yeah, that was for the amendment. And now, is there a motion to pass finally today?
Motion to pass finally.
Second.
One second. Any discussion? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, President Protem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
I do have, is there anything from members?
I do, I have a couple of things, but go ahead. You want to do something first?
I have meeting announcements, and then we have our motions at the end for minutes and adjourn the meeting, so please.
It's okay, okay. I just really, I've heard the comments about the safety in the City of Pittsburgh, and I'm going to say this has been a violent week in the City of Pittsburgh, but there's been, even though some people are surviving, thankfully, to our great medics and to our first responders and to the care they get in our amazing hospitals in the City of Pittsburgh, thankful to that. There has been way too much violence happening lately, mostly with young kids. And this past week, I got a phone call that kids in Sheridan were doing something at a Sheridan Chop and Kitchen. So I get down there, and there was eleven kids that jumped a kid from Central Catholic. He was in the community meeting, one friend, and, you know, helped, we drove that kid home and helped him, but everybody who drove past saw what happened, and nobody was helping this kid. And I'm afraid, I don't know what happened this yesterday with the shooting, which actually took place in Ingram Borough, on the street in Ingram Borough, but it was reported to the City of Pittsburgh, but, which I understand it was probably our kids, but when their kids do something in our district, we don't say it happened in Ingram, we say it was our city. That's neither here nor there. Where it happened isn't as, doesn't matter as much as that it's continuing to happen all around in Allegheny County. And I think part of that is, is we have no place to take kids, there is no place to put kids when there's, I think the place that took Schuman Center now holds about twelve kids any day, and twelve kids for the entire county. And I don't say that that's the answer, but I do think that there has to be a answer in having, I mentioned this a long time ago, a curfew or someplace for kids to have a center to go to, a rec center that's open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, where in north, southeast, west, and central, something has to happen, period, because it's not, and let me just say, everybody can say crime is related to politics, or this one or that one has different, there's nothing anybody's going to do to stop crime once there's things that are happening in the community. You can only react when that, when it happens. I mean, we can try best we can, but reach is usually, you know, in the community, and they were not for this incident. And the next day, I got another phone call that there was another incident with young kids in the community. So I'm hearing and seeing a lot of stuff, and it's, it comes back a lot of times to the young people in the community and parents. If somebody, the kid had six hundred and fifty-dollar pair of shoes taken. If six hundred and fifty, one of your kids walks in the door with a pair of shoes that are six hundred and fifty dollars that they didn't walk out of the house with, the parents need to start asking some questions. So everybody wants to say it's the kids are out of control, but I'm really at the point where I'm looking to see what we can do in terms of parents or guardians or whomever's raising kids. And I do realize a lot of kids earn foster care, and a lot of kids are being raised by second time around grandparents. I understand all that. But we have to do better and make sure that we're getting some resources to people that are raising kids. And we have to do better in helping our kids understand that committing crimes is not a good way of life, and that being bored is not a reason to commit a crime. Everybody says the kids need something to do. Well, something to do is nice, but that's not a reason to commit a crime. I mean, it's the mentality that we're teaching kids that this is acceptable is, is just getting beyond ridiculous. And then I also want to call for separately, for a post-agenda, maybe a public hearing. I'm going to call for both, and I'll decide with Council President which to have for the Avenue's a Hope funding, because I have seen that funding allocated and committed to several groups in my district. I don't see the benefit of it, I don't see it happening. And so I'm wondering where that money is and what's stalling it, and I wonder who has, who received the money. So there's a lot of things I think we need to start asking questions about, because it's been years. That program was started under Reverend Burgess, I believe, when he was here. So where is the money that was supposed to be helping build a block, you know, business districts across the entire city, you know, not in one area, but across the entire city? And, and what are they doing with that funding? Because I, I think I mentioned last year, there's a place called The Village that received money for, to open in Sheridan, and I went down last May, or last, I'm sorry, probably in the fall, and there was a sign on the door that said Cease to Desist, and no work was done, but yet they received the grants. And then I went down and talked to the person, and she explained that there was some issues, which she gave me some invoices that she had, but they were computerized, so I don't even know what the reality of those. But the sign is still on the door that says Cease and Desist, no work has been done that I can tell of, and, and there's other programs similar to that that are being either told that they have to jump through a lot of hoops to get the funding, there's something more significant going on here, I'm going to get to the bottom of it. So motion to call for a post-agenda and public hearing cable cast on Avenue's a Hope funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? All right, we'll get that scheduled.
Thank you. And I would say the media's also calling about and asking questions, so it's not just, I think there's a lot of people paying attention.
Councilperson Warwick?
Yeah, just in regard to, I read as well in the news about a shooting, I believe it was in East Liberty, is that where it was? At any rate, I just, I, I hope that together as a council, just moving forward, you know, so much good work is being done within the community with this, you know, with our various groups, Safe Passages, Reach Program, Stop the Violence, we've had a number of post-agendas detailing that work that's being done both in the schools and in the community, and it has had a positive effect. But I would like to see just us as a city rally, you know, when we do have, and I know that it's hard because things like this happen, and it's sort of all of a sudden in the moment, and, you know, public safety and all the various partners are just dealing with the, with the incident and the trauma as it happens, but I would love for us to find a way as a, as a city, as elected officials to kind of, you know, when incidences like this happen to stand up together and acknowledge the victims, acknowledge the trauma, and the fact that this shouldn't be happening to any young people, to anyone's kids anywhere, right? No matter what neighborhood you're from, and kind of stand in solidarity that way, just sort of a vision zero for gun violence, and that's something that I'm looking forward to working with members on, you know, similar to how we have a vision zero program for, for traffic violence, to have the same thing for gun violence and to make sure that all that good work continues until we can have a city that is, yeah, as the councilwoman said, safe for everybody and their kids, and that parents are getting the resources, et cetera, you know, as much as we can do. So anyway, thank you.
Councilwoman Cal Smith?
Yeah, I just want to say briefly, I know that we're, we're talking about funding and doing different things, and I, and I do know that there's a lot of conversations about Stop the Violence and Reach and all the other programs that we're funding to stop the violence. And I am never going to say I oppose those groups because I don't oppose, I don't oppose the idea. What I oppose is the way that we totally disregarded reporting that, this council passed a form that was supposed to be completed so we know how the money's being spent, so we know the effectiveness of a program, so that would help us to know that, okay, maybe this year we spent twenty thousand dollars on this group, this group, and this group, but maybe next year we spend sixty thousand on just this one group because they're delivering results. So what I'd like to see is some evaluation of those programs, independent of the city, maybe with the controller, to talk about the effectiveness of what programs are working, which ones are not working, and fund, and I'm not opposed to funding those in a way that if they're actually yielding results. What I'm opposed to is us handing money out like it's walking around money and not getting results, and I think our kids deserve better than that. I mean, they have, they're counting on us to be the adults and to make sure that they're not getting shot on the darn streets, and instead, we're just handing money out hand over fist, not actually worrying about, I know we have some reporting mechanisms, but it's not what this council passed, which is law, and so it's, it's just using your own mechanism, it's going around council and deciding who's going to be, get, receive the funding, and there's a lot that we're just turning a blind eye to and allowing it to happen, and meanwhile, kids are relying on us to make, and, and parents and families who are losing loved ones or just even being shot. Maybe somebody's not dying, but for God's sake, they've been shot. And I mean, it's just the reality that we're just minimizing this in any fashion, just, it makes me insane because I think the kids need us to be, I think, and I want to stand with, I want councils to stand together and be a lot stronger on this issue in terms of violence for the young people, but also across our City of Pittsburgh. Mount Washington residents are dealing with stuff they've never dealt with. We had the safest zone in Zone Six in the City of Pittsburgh, and now with this recent, you know, all this activity happening, I don't know where we stand with that, but I also know it's sorely understaffed. So I just think, I'm eager to have those conversations because I am out on the streets, I am talking to the community, my kids are out there, so I, you know, I do care about what's happening, and I want to make sure whatever we do, it's not about politics but about results. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
If not, I do have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at two P.M., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill two thousand twenty-five, eighteen fifty-one, as it relates to conditional use for neighborhood academy. Speaker registration will close at twelve P.M. today. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June twenty-fourth at ten A.M., council will meet for their standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at nine A.M. Wednesday morning. And Thursday, June twenty-sixth at one thirty P.M., council will hold a cable cast public hearing, I'm sorry, council will hold a cable cast post-agenda relative to storm response chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. The cable cast public hearing on the trash situation in Pittsburgh that was scheduled for this Thursday at six P.M. has been rescheduled for Thursday, July ninth, at six P.M. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on council meeting webpage by the deadline.
meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Need a motion to excuse the absent members?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? And then also last, will the motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourn.